We're good to go. Can you hear us?
Yeah, I see.
Brenda, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you. Right, today is Monday, September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four, the time is five thirty-one P M. Let's call the special Village Board meeting to order. Myself, Mike Capers, present.
Caleb Garner, present.
Tony Curtis, present.
Chris Duque, present.
Chris Moreno, present.
Grant Chrome, present.
Anybody else by Zoom? David, stand for the pledge. I believe in the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So there's four of you guys out there. Could you guys maybe describe what you'd like to see with the parks?
Sure, I was gonna do public comment.
Yeah, perfect. Hold him up here for you.
My name's Kim Dunley, and I live on Main Street here in the Village. I'm here representing the Somerset Champions Council, and we, the council was born out of the Village's Comprehensive Action Plan Committee that you had sanctioned. And we brought a number of recommendations to the Village Board, a lot to do with, well, we have three different categories. Community pride, downtown revitalization, and quality of life. And underneath quality of life was all the green spaces, walking trails, the parks, more enhancements in the parks. And the Village Park was an area that we heard a lot about from our community. And we, I heard a lot about the Village Park when I was involved with Rivers and Roads as well. So for, it's been a long time, people would like to have that Village Park, more amenities there, enhancements made, and to be able to enjoy the Village Park. And we've had lots of input, but time has gone on, and so I'm very interested to hear what the Board is interested in doing now. And the council would, because that is one of the, a large part of some of the recommendations that we made to the Village Board. We certainly would like to be involved in any way, help, support. Depending on what, what you're doing, I'd like you just to keep the council in mind and let us know how we can collaborate and partner with you.
Is there any certain things, Kim, that you or the champions have talked about and would like to see down there?
We heard a lot of different voices, and we heard voices that want to keep that area as natural as possible. And then we heard voices that would like to develop some things there. One of the things that I've heard over and over and over for a long time is a river walk. So a walking path along the river and moving it as far as possible up and down. You know, potentially some private property might want to extend it, I don't know. But that has been for years, people would really love to see a river walk. And maybe we can find a way for multiple things to coexist and thrive. So the people who would like to keep it natural, maybe they would be willing for little pop-up ice cream or coffee during a season. And then have that closed down in the wintertime, and maybe some cross-country trails on that walking path during the winter, if we get enough snow. So I think our goals would be to try and find here from the community what they would want to see. And then work on a plan to have them all coexist if possible, so that they can all thrive.
This meeting isn't just for Village Park, we can talk about all parks. And I hope you guys don't mind if we kind of keep this informal and back and forth.
And all parks and all green spaces fell underneath quality of life for the Comprehensive Action Plan, as we were working on.
Okay, anything on the other parks?
We had a number of ideas, and in fact, we have a meeting tomorrow night, and some of honoring the couple, Tom and Ann Forrest, who were integral in, in beginning and developing Larry Forrest Park. So we're looking at trying to honor them in some way, and I, one idea is putting up a bench in their honor with a plaque on it. We'll be talking about that tomorrow night. We'd also like to honor, put something up about Larry Forrest. Many people do not know who he is, you know, people who just moved into this area, they think maybe that was an elderly person that donated the land. They don't know that it was a seventeen-year-old who had died in a tragic death. And, and that is there for young people to enjoy and play and have fun. And that was the whole point of developing that park. So we'd like to do things there. Veterans Park, you know, the Legion does such a great job there. And next, it's the Village Park, and of course, I'm sure the, the group here has heard a lot from the community. Over the years. Any other questions for me?
Oh, and I, it's, yeah, I'd like to keep this informal as possible, so we can have back and forth communication to Mr. Park.
All right, I, David Rock, and I'm gonna be up at a, I'm under it's at the Lions today. And we, as you know, along with the Chamber and the Fire Department, do P S U days, and then we do a haunted day ride, we do the circus, the three things that we do there. Does the whole world revolve around those things? I don't know, it'd be nice if we could keep doing P S U days there. My, my thought is, you know, could we keep a ball field there? I don't know, maybe we could just have one golf field instead of two. I, I don't know, I, I don't know the answer. Well, one of my thoughts was, if, if we could walk before we ran, we could just run. And I like the idea about the River Walk, and, and me and Steve, and he, maybe he'll talk about that a little bit, this, that'd be the spark of the River Walk, it could be anyway. But my thought is, if we walk before a run to get, to get electricity, water, and sewer down there somewhere, at least the second level, maybe not the third, third level, maybe electricity, well, I don't know. Is that a flood plain? Get electricity, water, and sewer down there to start, and then maybe go from there. I personally, and I've talked to Caleb about this a little bit, I would love to see it developed. If you've ever been to the River Walk in, in San Antonio, they've got these restaurants, and it's set up perfectly with the levels there to have restaurants there with, with some seating, maybe on the second level, and then the third level, you're overlooking the, the River Walk, but I, I don't know if that would ever happen. Oh, and then my thought on that, too, we always get pushed back, pushed back on anybody ever selling land to, to a commercial, let's say, a sportsman may be interested in doing it. You could just lease, do a ninety-nine-year lease, and have some money coming into the village, not giving up any property. Otherwise, I don't know all the answers, it'd be nice if we keep doing P S U days and, and different activities down there. But if the Lions and, and our group could be involved a little bit, we, we'd love to, we'd love to be.
About any of the other parks?
No, I don't really have any in, input on the other parks, but, but the Larry Forrest Park, yeah, that's, I mean, that, because we know our age, we, maybe the, we know what happened and why Larry Park, Larry Forrest Park is named the way it is, but, yeah, that's a good idea. No, I don't have anything.
Maybe being allowed to be a little interaction, that's great, and I appreciate that, so. As many of you might know, I have the property, Cross River Kitty Corner. Some of you know that we're, we're building a food truck park there, and so we've kind of been on a little bit of a holding pattern. This being one of the reasons to see what happens there. And then, too, the property south of the bridge, when I bought that from the Plurds, during title work, a headcount came up in that two-acre parcel just south of the bridge. I was assured at that time before I bought it that, no, it's always been their property. It's always been like, we've never maintained it for thirty years, and so when the trees were down, we went, we continued to maintain it, but the Plurds didn't want to wait for titles, so I just closed without, without those two acres. So those two acres are kind of a limbo, but with these discussions, maybe it'll work out great, because if you guys would be interested in including that into your future park plans, I would be interested in saying, I'll sign whatever's required to, to say I don't have any ownership of that, and then, and then, because I think that that could be an extension of the park. And what I'm doing up on top with the little food truck park, I think would play well into that, where people could grab a little sandwich, snack, an ice cream cone, a hot dog, whatever, for their kids. Want to trail down and then enjoy some, some picnic game down by the water, or just what other activities might be at it.
Can you describe the two acres?
It's just south of the bridge, and it would go about to the walk, the stairway, that old stair, that little piece.
Before, would it go to, it stopped at the stairway, not the catch basin? So is the catch basin on your storm drain on your property, too?
Yes, is that kind of where the cutoff is?
The stairway would be the cutoff. And if a future plan comes into a, a, a longer River Walk, we'd be interested in that. Dave and I did do some work in that, or I did about three or four years ago, had some discussions with Frank Plurd about making a lot of three, three-and-a-half mile on a walkway, so it'd go through the old Somerset camp, and through the small P C U box, and then connect with Plurds, and then all the way to the river's edge.
So that would connect with Tit Five and Two, right?
Yeah, if things make sense, and, you know, since I'd be interested in that as well, either giving some permanent walkway. Those may be pipe dreams at some point, but it would be a pretty unique experience. How many places can offer an over-three-mile riverside walk? People use the Somerset Loop, and this would, in my opinion, be much neater than that. Someday, you could probably light it, or in winter time, they could cross down to ski it or something. All the things that I'm sure everyone's thought of, making it happen, funding, funding's another thing, but I would say I wouldn't hold that up, okay, if we could make that happen. Frank's position at the time was, well, I don't want to give you that or give you that if it's gonna hold up my sale. But depending on who ended up buying Cranks, of course, may also be interested in that. Private landowners, I think that helps, but they're going on a development, some of these trails certainly don't hurt your land values. We see them happen all over.
Did you get everything approved through the county to do seasonal, or what's your plan?
Yeah, so, as of right now, we do have a county approval, our campground is licensed to pay our fees here. But again, I'm not sure that the campground is the highest and best use yet, I'm still looking for that, I've had some discussions with some of you board members, with the board. That property is obviously in the township, so I've been at their meetings, like, what would you like to see here? So, as you are very well aware, Somerset is kind of a moving target, right? It's, it's, it's a work in progress, and so we've just been wanting to be a a part of that that makes sense, rather than, hey, this is what we want, and then all of a sudden, it's right in the middle of. That's the main intersection of downtown Somerset, I mean, that is it, right there, so we're, we're right at that intersection, like something that gets well. It's Somerset roads, both for Somerset and obviously selfishly for us. So we've had different discussions, the reason we went with the campground, it had the least amount of change to the property or land, with the least amount of expense out of pocket, to at least generate a few dollars back. Seasonal sites, and I don't have to put a whole bunch of infrastructure, some electric, a little sewer system.
How many sites, and then what?
So the current license we have is twenty-one or twenty-two sites. Long term, there's enough space for many more than that. We want to see the direction that are part of a park, of, you know, that, how would we do that? We know there's a need for some more affordable housing, I've talked to a few members in the township about, hey, could we put in six, seven hundred square foot, eight hundred square foot homes, which today's standard, people say, well, that's so tall, small, but I'll remind you, that's all Robbinsdale, St. Louis Park, oh, Bloomington, that's all they were, was eight, nine hundred square foot ramblers. That's everything after World War II, and then we started getting up to these three or four hundred thousand, but we have a large business community here, you guys know that, S M C has been many more big, and they all have jobs to pay a wage that doesn't allow people to buy a five hundred thousand dollar house. So now where do we get employees from for this year? There's nothing in St. Pierre County that's under three or four hundred. So our plan would be higher-end homes, all the granite, all the fine finishes, but at two fifty or less. So it would appeal to first-time home buyers, seniors, we have a need for that. There did, they'd just be slab-on-grade, someone would be two stories or story and a half, whatever the person would, would want, but a planned community and open space, all the stuff along the river there would be, you know, either the trail to walk, or we would have, and for this community, if it was something that Somerset would be interested in, of the playground or things like that in there for, for them, but.
Yeah, you'd be looking to enter at some point, then?
Right, right. And then the sewer would be, as you guys are aware, but a new sewer lift station in by August, so less than a year from now, we would be able to connect to that.
So, Steve, would you say that if we did move on this, or we're moving on something in the village, it'd be more likely to move on, invest in your property as well, then?
Correct.
Yeah. What, what would you like to see at the Village Park?
Well, if you did something on the southern side of the, the bridge, other than, you know, just beautifying it, as we all know, that's kind of the faster water, I wouldn't want kids to want to have to play or fish or anything there. I think that's a little more dangerous area, but the walking path would be nice, maybe some picnic tables or, or something like that.
Down from the rapids, or upstream?
Upstream from the rapids. Because that's the only property that I want, or whatever, that I could have any say in anyhow, really, well, I could have say in all of it, but that particular piece.
Would you be?
I don't think that's where we'd want to put a fishing pier, for instance, because the water's real fast right in there.
Right, right above the rapids there, like a little bit above the stairs, that'd be the best spot for a, a fishing pad to actually catch any fish, actually used to fish there as a kid. Because I think they were looking at putting that a little farther north, and where they put it, you're not gonna start chucking, catching.
So kind of where the first get-out is, before the rapids start somewhere in there, and be open to somewhere in there.
So the trail's already there, what are you suggesting to, to like go up the hill or something into the?
So, no, the trail is there, and then it goes to the get-out point, and then we just continue it on all the way to your guys' property.
Fantastic. So what is, any of the other parks, any input on anything?
No, I think.
Pickleball, ever more pickleball, less pickleball?
I'm, I, we are working right now with adding four pickleball cords up at the edge of each property, and doing some fun leagues and something for people to do, and grab some grub in a place to hang out, and maybe lit. So, yeah.
Where you're getting pickleball courts?
We are gonna get some pickleball courts, doesn't mean that the public couldn't use them, we're not gonna charge for them, but there might be times where we have a league on a certain night of the week that the public could use.
Where, where exactly are the pickleball?
So if you know Somerset Camp, you know where the, the old, used to be their old barn to the facing the house, so the, the old tube stand, concession stand, the house and the barn to the left on the top, there's the little space, it's all flat right there.
Directly south from the barn?
Directly south of the barn, or, that's south, it'd be east, more east, yeah. So we fixed up the barn and put on a new roof and new siding, and we got some new garage doors, and, and that could be used for either storage or there's some, some discussions with turning into a, a smokehouse for one of our vendors to do barbecue out of, so they would have their smokers in there, make it a smokehouse. The old farmhouse is, and discussions with a baker, but they may find desserts, so it'd be like wine and desserts inside there, converting the old farmhouse into a place where everyone thought, you have to go there for there, whatever it is. A pastry chef by any means, but a chef thought, I, I open that up for.
Do you eat pastries? So is it more like a kind of an office or whatever, and then different amenities, like pickleball and?
Or, yeah, and then that's, well, if we do season sites, I mean, if we come up with, hey, we need a better niche use of you, put in these, you know, I, I've had discussions with Al Woodstock, like, if he'd be one of the builders of these homes. And, and then it would be for those homes to, to use as well, but pickleball, the big grassy area there, Michael's is packing up and moved, most of their stuff are ready, should be gone, we're gonna beautify that area for swap meets or farmer markets, car shows, whatever you want to do in that big grassy area.
So you're looking more for like tiny homes more than seasonals kind of?
Yeah, so when they use the word tiny home, people think, oh, those little things on wheels, so I don't know what the word is, other than smaller homes, better easier, cotted style, two bedrooms, two baths. You know, high-end finishes, high-end, a bunch of pictures I could show you, but I'm sure you all know what they are, but, but yeah, nice, nice stuff, low maintenance. The use of today, don't really want four thousand square foot anymore, they don't want, they don't know how to take care of their things. So it'd be low maintenance, nice association with rules and bylaws, so it doesn't become a mobile park or something like that, right? Storage rules, all of those things that anyone who'd want to live there would want the same rules anyhow, so. You know, junk outside, all things you'd want, nice development. But not four hundred and fifty thousand.
You're talking down below?
Down below, the twenty-six acres.
And would people rent these or own them?
If I was younger, I'd build the rent, but I'm old now, so they would own them. I'd put the fifty or sixty lots in, or whatever it was.
Condo, kind of a condo, or a P V, or a condo type thing?
Yes.
Because it'd be a small lot.
So I, I, I do love hearing about all the plans that we have, put them, pull it back into parks, just a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, so.
But I do enjoy, I do like to hear about what Steve's plans.
So the point is, that, those two acres, though, the south of the, the river there, if you guys would be interested, including that in your park plans. Don't let me hold you up and say, I'm not gonna let you have, I'm gonna fight you on that land, would, no, I would rather.
Would there be an issue down the road tying then to that, a private, if he had a private path on his property, would that be an issue of him tying into our park path down the road, or that be an issue, like, say, he wanted to build a park path along Somerset Camp there, and they wanted to tie into the Village Park system, would that be an issue?
Figure that out.
Yeah, I don't know.
I just want to keep the, continually grow.
Private path would butt to a public path.
More or less, yeah.
Yeah, we, I mean, obviously, we'd find a way that works beneficial, because at the same time, I don't want Somerset residents walking and then being, oh, you got it, you can't walk any farther.
Well, let's just be honest, we all just walk through your property anyways.
It's okay, nobody else, and a few people taking equipment, you know, that happens everywhere, every theater here, so we've got a, a few people spray painting equipment down there, but for the most part, so the local residents walking their dogs.
It's a beautiful area, we keep it well-lit, and I would think that that would, us beautifying it would only help.
Yeah.
Keep it, yeah, keep people out there.
And, you know, and just in full disclosure, that, for me, like, the two acre You know, and just in full disclosure that for me, like the two acres, what would I ever do? The the power lines run right through it. Um, I'd never to get away with not allowing an easement for emergency vehicles. The slopes are steep, so development in that part would be almost impossible anyhow. So if we cleared all that under brush out from under there and people could sit at the edge eats and see the river from there. And have a place to go and and gather. Sit outside on the backside there, we clean some of that brush up and. I'd like to build a patio out back, so we can walk out on the backside and sit out on the patio there. And also see the river.
Edgy eats, is that the?
Yeah, the concession though.
Anything else like that?
No, it sounds like it's open.
Gentlemen, in the back.
Hey, I'm Jim Rager, I'm with the snowmobile club. I know that this is, I love the progress, I love things that way, but. I don't know if anybody's taken into consideration the snowmobile trail into town. And it's the only access, the only safe access is that bridge.
You're talking about the bridge across the river down.
And then we maintain that and we've been, Greg's been putting boards down and protecting that and taking care of it. That's been there since nineteen seventy one. Uh, that is the only trail in the town, so we need to make sure that. In that development that we have access in and out without damaging your new progress. And so that is our concern that, you know, if you put, if you're putting in pavement off the bridge. There has to be something down to protect that pavement because of carbides and studs. That'll tear it up and there's no chance that safety reasons why we should be crossing that bridge. You know, the the main bridge on snowmobile. Um, with the studs, carbides, there's no control of the sled on cement.
So right now the path comes in. Out uh by the fire hall crosses in front of Quick Trip, right, and then comes down by the bank?
Yep.
Comes across the street.
Into Steve's.
And then comes down that access that Steve has.
Yep.
For emergency vehicles.
Yep.
You whip a U E in here and then cross under the river, which is over the river.
And then you come up. And then cross over the bridge, right? You go under the big.
You go under the big bridge and then we have that a small bridge and we cross that way.
And then the path ends at more or less at the parking lot at Village Park there, is that?
Yeah, and then you get up into and then they go, they go on the roads or they go where they can. You know, to get home or to get to the holiday or to be, you know, or to now BP.
And it's not holiday anymore, it's circumvent.
It's been that way, you guys.
So if you, so right now, I mean, there's a couple plans that incorporate us wrapping around down the one way. And then some other ones wrapping around, um, more towards the bridge. But if we, if you guys got over the bridge here and had a path to get up to Circle K Main Street, would that be fine? Or do you have to get out at the, do you have to get to the parking lot or is it just to get to Main Street that's fine or?
I think what Jim was saying is he wants to make sure that he's got access in the winter to cross the bridge.
Right, we gotta make sure that people are accessed, otherwise if you're living in town, if you're living in town, you have to trailer. To get across the bridge. Okay, so that, I mean, the concern is, we, if you're gonna build something that. We're not going to be damaging it with it, you know, in the winter. Or we're not blocked and we don't have access. We just want you to take consideration of what, how it's built. That we maintain access the way it is. We we already, we're, it's already tough enough to get in town. Right, but Rondebois is the sponsor, Sportsman's the sponsor, the gas stations are sponsors. So I mean, we'd like to make sure, I mean, we're we're. Um, we have to raise our own money. We are, you know, everything is done, land is done volunteer wise, but everything else, we have to raise money. We raise money by sponsorship or by donations, so.
Yeah, I mean, you guys run, you guys have paths that run through La Granger and stuff like that, so.
Yeah, we go, we we have access to, our trails can go from here to. Down into southern Minnesota, southern Wisconsin, all the way to Superior. You know, but they're all all privately land or foresty land, so now we are, you know, counting on. You know, you guys to help maintain that access in that land.
Were you involved in the previous plan and how they planned to address this in that plan or did we not really get that far? But when we had the two thousand eighteen Master Con.
No, but I don't think it's anyone's intention to impact snowmobiles, so. Especially in the winter time.
A lot of parks don't get used as much in the winter either.
Right, and that's why I'm saying developments and progress is all great. We just did not want to be cut out.
Right.
And having to have this battle.
As whereas pedestrians can get through on top. If they don't rely on.
Right, and and I just, from what it looked like, I don't believe a snowmobile is why it couldn't get on the sidewalk. I don't think it's why. Right, and you wouldn't want us on the bridge, so we gotta make sure that, you know, we are looking at the big picture and that we are allowing. This, it's not that we need a lot. Do we groom, and we don't have, we don't even, we don't, we don't even run a groomer down there, so it's all. You know, guys jumping on it, you know, their sleds and then getting through and getting just.
Getting out of town.
Getting out of town and then are some people coming in.
Going to the bar.
Going to the bar, buying a burger, getting whatever, you know, beer, burger, you know, and that's, you know, that's what they, it's all about. So, uh, we just wanted to make sure that that was, you know, brought to our, you know, your attention or figured that it was still in the plan.
Will we have all, there shouldn't be an issue incorporating the.
Well, we could just restrict that to rest of that bridge and tell them to use.
When the trails are open, which is.
Yep.
Wintertime, yeah.
Well, um, I know there are different machines, but do ATBs use your same trails?
Not even over, the bridge is open now.
No, ATBs do not use that.
So they can be on the road, right? But they legally, they can be on the road, right? So, so I'm sure they choose to do that.
Yeah, yeah, they don't even, they don't. They don't even have access to it anymore. That's not part of the ATV trip.
Okay.
But the only one is, is the snowmobile, because we cannot be across the main bridge, we cannot be on the highway there. Any other questions?
Like this is an open format, so if something comes up.
I'm just here for Silver and Kristen. Where should we start?
Do you want me to kind of just spend five minutes kind of going over the master plan and just refresh everybody?
We wanna go right into Village Park right away or do we wanna hit the other improvements? We wanted on the other parks first and.
Kind of thinking we may look at the court and then we could talk about Village on the backside of that, because the court is part of that whole.
One thing I'm Larry Forrest, it wouldn't be bad if we could put up bigger fences or netting. For the parks because of fall balls and going over and hitting other pedestrians and in. You know, you're right there, but there's a lot of fall balls and a lot of dangerous situations. Seeing some people get hit heads and backs and things of that nature, so if there could be something, you know, either higher. Um, fencing with curbs or netting.
I talked to Pat about that, uh, last year, we kind of went through that and brought it up with, uh, some of the parks on on. Like running a cable or something and and putting up a netting, because it catches a lot of wind and it's, uh. It's something we'd look into, but it's it's a, it's a significant cost deal and it's it's worthy of, you know, a discussion anyways. You know, as far as putting it up and putting it down in the fall and stuff like that. I know Pat was mentioning something about, you know, possibly fundraising in in that regards too, so. I didn't know where the the associations were at.
I just think it's a very good safety issue more than it is, you know.
And I mean, we're pretty standard compared to, I I meant softball and baseball tournaments every weekend and there's, you know, four fields all kind of. Put together and there's balls flying everywhere all the time, you know, just the same fencing that everybody else has.
If you're looking into that, I think maybe that'd be an idea.
Like I was saying, with the court, you know, we got several different parks throughout the village, you know. You know, Joe Casey's, Montec, uh, La Granger Meadows, you know, Whispering Pines. And, you know, there's some suggestions and recommendations in the court plan. And I guess the question is, how much of those does this committee wanna attack those suggestions? And at what, at what? And to what degree? Adding signage and so on and so forth. You wanna start with the court plan and we could come back to Village, because Village Park obviously is gonna be one of the the biggest things. And probably more time consuming on on that, but if there's other things at the other parks too, because. I know, I know Village Park is important and it's 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 something that's definitely gonna be, like you said, walk before we run type thing, uh, and. And the development aspect of it, but there is other other areas of the the village too that need to be at least looked at through our court. Moment as well.
Well, I know a few years ago, there was some discussion that the bike trail from Still Waters is coming here. Is that still happening and where will that tie into any of the parks? Cause I don't even know where it comes in, so I just.
Jim, do you know?
I don't, but I do know that there's a meeting of the, um, Bike Coalition coming up soon, might be this week at Olfonte, actually.
Feel like you eventually may wanna be here.
Yeah.
I think, uh, it's actually the construction in Hudson, coming out of North Hudson, is actually part of that. Trail coming towards Stillwater, their loop, that seven mile loop. But eventually they wanted to go from there to Somerset, or actually came out by the, um. Uh, sink of the Synchron National.
Wonder if you think that long term, if it ties into any of the parks.
I see this meeting as, uh, like, not let's. Spend four million dollars right away next year, but a long term plan, but put a a good, get a good plan in place and then. Allocate money and stuff when we can. I, um, I asked Bob to put something together of. Priority lists and kind of a timeline. Uh, Bob, you wanna go through that first or Chuck, you wanna go through your?
I could take the lead.
Um, just, you know, starting with Village Park, just because that's. Expensive, um, from what is on our master plan, that that can be tweaked any way we want to, to pull things over, to leave things. Uh, the first step of that is moving to get with elders, our financial consultants to see where we're at. As we expand as a village, it costs a lot of money, so we all know that we've, we've been. Spending a lot of money recently on on different things and, um, getting them to come in and advise us, uh, what. We can and how far we can go with certain things before we get ourselves in a situation where we got a beautiful park, but, uh. We don't have any way to take care of it. That's kind of the biggest thing on that, uh, so, uh. That one's really hard to answer, um, just basically getting them to consult with the village to let us know. Where we're at currently and then what we can afford to do on a short term, long term basis, so we have a better idea.
More copies.
I don't, unfortunately.
You know how to run this printer?
Team member? Okay, there you go. Uh, Larry Forrest.
And then are you, are you able to share your screen so people that watch?
I don't have my computer, so that's.
In Chuck's here. So without going to elders.
I said that's. Probably is, we have so much out there right now, and then we have some things hitting general funds, some things that are, um, GM that. We've got things in our tip, um, so it really requires that to put a spreadsheet for us to say, okay, here you go. Uh, and then. That'll give us a better idea of, okay, cross the sign for X amount of years or. That's the thing is what. You know, new development has brought in compared to what's going on and as far as our debt is is. The biggest thing that I'm concerned of, so we have a good idea of that, because so much has changed in the last two years. Uh, and we have a lot of things yet that have to be realized, so that'd be the first thing. I would suggest on the Village Park is to see. Where, why do we need to update some numbers?
We have general maintenance and then we have, we have, you know.
Capital improvements.
A capital improvement in infrastructure, right?
Right.
So, I mean, if we break it down into into three different categories.
Yep.
What we have for general maintenance, what we're looking at for capital improvements, and what are we looking at for for infrastructure developments?
Exactly.
Because we're gonna need the infrastructure before we can do the capital improvements and general maintenance is an ongoing thing.
Right.
Right? So if you broke it down into those three categories and said, we're gonna X amount, X amount for general maintenance each, and, you know, per annual. And we can look at, we need this infrastructure and then we got these capital improvements. That way we would be able to discuss whether or not we're gonna be putting in trail systems, pavilions, fixing what we have and so on and so forth, so. That's kind of where I, you know, I'm looking at of the of the general maintenance aspect of it, what we're looking at for general maintenance, because that's gonna fall into our normal. Annual budget, right? And then what we can look at for capital improvements, that's the kind of stuff that we'd be going to, uh, elders for, and that would be. For infrastructure and and, uh, and redevelopment, right?
Well, that 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 maintenance piece there too, we don't wanna have something that we're not able to afford to maintain.
So, yeah, right.
That all comes into that picture.
Right, more equipment, you think we would, if we could build this park as we, let's say we go with the the Village Park plan. How many, is that gonna be one more tool cat? Is that? Can you go through your ideal plan of what you think and we can have some discussion after?
Yeah, to start the phase work, I, I, you know, I really would recommend us finding out what we wanted. If we wanna keep the ball fields, if we wanna remove ball fields, keep on ball fields, that's gonna shift the scope of the grading work. So that should be determined first and then, um, the multi-use trail, I think, is one of the the. Most popular things for the community, that's always. Um, that would go a lot of the grading plan, obviously, and, um, you know, if we wanted to do an aggregate base for. A few years to offset the cost of a a solid structure, uh, surface on that, that that that's a potential. And grubby and getting that pre-prepped, I guess, for for the future layout of that. Uh, Village Park area is. It'd be number one. And do we wanna do that all in one or is it beneficial to do it? A chunk here and a chunk there, you know, we're talking about the north side and the south side of the river, uh, you know. So there's a lot of things there we need to determine, you know, each time we have a contractor come in, there's a mobilization costs and. The cost of bidding and all, there's a lot of expense to do it. The grading and and phases, I guess, I'd like to say, but, um. And then we gotta make sure the area is stable, because it's next to the river, so we've got, uh, vegetation that's growing and. Those those types of things.
What would you like to see changed or fixed or added?
I'd like to see the park just more usable. Right now, it's, it's, it's just not. If we, we've got a lot of, uh, continue to have a lot of. Issues with people, because they're kind of hidden back there, so if we can clean that hillside up. Where there's less tree growth and it wasn't so dense, then I think people would maybe reconsider going down there to do not desirable things. Um, and that, to get that park used. Um, and that to get that park used on an annual, uh, right now it's used heavy in the spring and. Uh, midway through the summer, but Jim wins baseball done the week after late, uh.
Be pretty much.
So that kind of sits by it for two or three months and then ball ball starts up. And it gets used again, but it, it's only attracting a, a demographic of baseball clubs. That's it.
With both fields or one field.
That's one. Yep. And that backfield, in my opinion, should just go away because.
Is it ever used?
It's, it's used, but it's like, okay, uh, I guess, but it's not accessible. You know, there's nowhere to park. Um, so anybody with any limited mobility, they really can't get to it. They can sit on top. It's again thrown in there to address demand.
So if we take it away, we gotta find it someplace else, right? Okay, so anything we're talking about here today when it comes to ball fields is it's a one for one.
Right.
And possibly more.
Yeah, but one, that one, the road field is nostalgic. It does have. Um, you know, pea soup days, but you know, kids like playing under lights and they can have more games down there because they go later. Uh, Larry Forrest doesn't have lights, so you're confined to daylight. Whereas that you're not.
So if there was a place that we could find or, or, uh, put these ball fields as an option, put lighting up.
Yeah, sure.
Something that we would, we, we, cause you know, we're not gonna put lights down at Larry Forrest. I don't think everybody, all the neighbors probably have a fit about that. Per se, but you know, I mean, they definitely have their, their.
Your opinion's on that. Be on our list of.
Lighting, lighting has been improved, you know, with LED, the lights are very focused down on the field, so it's not, uh, including like. You can see there's a ball game, uh, there you can see there's a football game.
Yeah.
Very easily, but then there's other newer facilities that, oh, it just kind of pops up and I don't think it includes this badly, but you definitely wanna. Probably consult with some proprietors around there to make sure that. It doesn't affect the quality of life.
One thing they brought up that I would like to address is I would really like to see pea soup days and everything stay down there. So whatever we do for that parking area, I know right now we've kind of got. Trees in the middle and stuff like that. I'd probably like more of an open concept to that so that we could keep pea soup days down there because I remember being. Down over here by the rendezvous or I remember being up in Veterans Park, I remember being over here. Um, by the library and I, I definitely think the spot where we got it now is the right spot. And then when we do build that pavilion, it'll be great for the, the bingo and whatever else we need to run in there. You won't have to put the tent up, you know, we'll just have that there.
Sure.
Well, I think as you're talking, the more events, the more activity you can have down in the park, more people you get down there and then they will. Use it on their own as well. They'll see the amenities that are there. So I think your planning has to include as many events, activities. Um, as possible throughout the year to keep it active throughout the year.
And that's a decision, losing my voice, and that's a decision. Do we wanna do something like Dave Rock wants where it's a kind of businesses and boardwalks along the river? Or do we wanna take that second ball field out and just kind of clear out that whole hillside so everybody can see the beautiful river? Or something else? Well, we should still have the, it'd be nice to keep the slide hill there for the winter because. Good spot to slide down there. I mean, there's always, it's always a fun spot.
Yeah, right now it's just overgrown and we've got box elder trees and we've got buckthorn and, and it's hard to maintain because of the slope. Uh, it just doesn't, so if we get that, like I said, the grading and the maintenance is a lot easier. Um. So that's where I would suggest starting would be the, you know, taking that stuff, grading that to where, where we have it, but then. Having a plan so we're not organically just throwing things in, in spots and having issues with, you know, that doesn't work here, you know. Um, should the bathroom stay up on top? Should it go on the bottom? Should that be relocated? Now there's a lot of things, there'd be two of them. Um, you know, that's a, quite a distance from the lower part up to that, that bathroom concession stand. So it might be.
Would that be a good spot for, um, uh, hockey rink, public hockey rink? They had one down there before, that's with the baseball.
Yeah, we had, um, you know, I know there's a lot of people that would support that, but in my experience, just a lot of people don't use it. It's hard. Last year you guys saw that, you know, they tried to do that between sportsmen's and it was fifty degrees. Um, other times it's just too darn cold and people don't like using it. Um. I always, uh, thought that just putting something by the, the hockey rink now make sense.
Well, there's a warming hose there. We can always put one up in the art, in the field by. Veteran track. There used to be one there.
No, it's a playground.
I will say this from. You know, uh, going, cause you were talking about the two thousand eighteen plan. I'm definitely not for like a three million dollar splash pad, but I would like to see some, you know, major improvements to clean it all up. Make it usable and accessible to everyone. Yeah. So part of that master plan that, you know, I went over that one. So one thing we can, a few things we can knock out of there is there's a, there's a extra, the extra pedestrian, pedestrian bridge. That's like four hundred thousand. The splash pad was only roughly like two hundred thousand dollars. So that really wasn't a huge part of the cost. A lot of it was like Bob said, was that, is that great? Uh, but there was an extra playground in there that I don't really think is necessary. I don't think we need two playgrounds. Um, and I don't know, it sounds like we want electric down there, but I think that is that we could have solar lighting. I mean, that would probably save a lot of money. I don't know if that's a good idea long-term though, or.
Um, you should look at things that don't have a lot of long-term. I was like, I'm not against splash pads or nothing, but. It's not like they just maintain their expense on the hill. Why don't you spend another hundred grand a year to maintain it? Oh, and so you came in and said, now you up there, you know, that's person testing that water every, the guy was a couple pools, that's where, that's the campground. Oh, man, they are paying, they have certified pool operators, the chlorine we go through is thousands a month. Well, Chris knows all about mine. I'm just telling you, it, it isn't gonna be the two hundred thousand you'll spend. Tens of thousands every year in maintenance.
Forty thousand and it was forty percent more.
Yeah, I, I can get numbers on what they cost to maintain that. The reason why a lot of them are going to splash trails is because then you don't.
Don't have to have a lifeguard.
You don't have to have a lifeguard and, you know, there, there's way to, you know, not recycle the water, just spend the water. So you don't have to, you know, so there's, there's, there's obviously, there's obviously maintain, maintenance costs. But they are, they're, they're doing these days and I can find out what those maintenance costs are, you know, so you can make that.
And they're very popular because people are wanting a place to take their kids to cool off and be in their own community and maybe have some. Kid parties around there. So they are very popular. So if it's something, I'm assuming that, um, you're going to. Hold other meetings and get more community input. Um, and maybe the community, at one time they were very interested in splash pads. That. Might have changed by now, you know, so community input could.
I, I don't know if our community is. Big enough to have a splash pad there for thirty-two hundred people and then it's the ages of, you know, like. Six months old to like five years old or whatever, eight years old and then after that.
Unless it's a pretty elaborate one, like. Kids have gone to the center who have, has one. Now it's in like five minutes they're boarded. Cause there's only five little. So unless you're spending like the ones for, on the goals that you can choose things. That one in Senator Harvey is.
So in our, in the, the master plan, uh, survey that was done, seventy-eight percent wanted walking trails. And, uh, river walk, uh, and, uh, trails for walking, snow short, shoeing, uh, sixty-nine percent picnic. Shelters, pavilions, uh, and sixty-five percent access for kayaks and canoes. And, uh, six, less than fifty-eight percent on a splash pad and fifty-seven for a pool. You know, we have river right down there. Right? I think we could probably, you know.
Let it, let it be away from the pools.
Right. So I think, uh.
The one thing we have to do if we wanna do that is, um, so where that little backflow area is, we, we should probably make that into a, a swimming spot, put some sand down there. Um, where it's kind of protected a little bit if you stay out of.
So how, how are we able to do anything like that on the river, you know?
Just cleaning up what's there, right? That's a, a great idea.
I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with it. I'm just asking.
Do you need a lifeguard?
No.
I don't wanna get into that, but.
People are always in the river down there, you know, every time we go down there, people go up to their knees or whatever, walking on a rock. Are we able to do something like that? Like put sand and stuff in there and clear that open in that, in that edge?
Really sandy now.
Fairly sandy and more like cleaning up the riff ramp and some of the broad stuff.
It was a sandy beach when I was a kid.
It'd be fairly intensive to.
To slide stuff.
Fix that area up a little.
I don't be concerned. Yeah, a few times, Mike, you remember this, sometimes from in the early stream when that water's. Diving in after having the safe people were swept, you know, past that. So some kids, when I've gotten that current. You're gonna catch them down at Somerset and then the campground.
You're right. I, I would wanna promote that for kids to go into that.
It'll take you.
Yeah, it's crazy how it loops around, pulls you in and it is pretty dangerous there.
Very dangerous.
Well, but what I'm saying is we got, we got a lot of people that were wanting the, the river walks and we still are promoting that to this day. Part of that development is getting established river walk and then what other type, that's kind of the infrastructure that I was referring to. As you're getting your infrastructure in place with a river walk and then over time, we'd be able to develop and put in the other things, pavilions and so on and so forth.
So it's step one to get a comprehensive cost to just that river walk portion of it?
Well, that's a start and then we can always back out and see what, what elders will tell us at, at that point in time or what we can actually afford. And, and we could work from there, but if, if we will be achieving. Almost eighty percent of what the survey individuals want, and it sounds like what everybody else is kind of looking at here, and we also have to address the issues of. Where are we gonna go with the ball fields if we remove or if we keep the ball fields there? And the other stuff is kind of ancillary because I don't think we're gonna be taking away anything for pea soup days if we put in walking trails along the river. You know, then it's really, we need to look at, okay, what are we gonna develop in this area? What will go away? What will go in its place and where will that stuff go in? And, and what, and what area? I mean, we have other parks. Are we able to put ball fields in there? Are we gonna move? Into a completely different area and set up a ball field and say, this is gonna be the Somerset, you know, ball field or is that gonna be a private endeavor? I, I don't have them answers. But I think looking at it from that aspect, if we said, well, let's put in, let's grub everything out and let's put in the, the walks. I like the idea of getting. Access across the river and, and a walking path coming back up on, uh, uh, over by the Dairy Queen, uh, you know, them, them stairs all have to be taken out. There's really should be a good walking path coming down on that side.
So I think that's already. That's already the work.
Exactly.
Switch back.
Yep.
Uh, what, what, and I don't remember this exactly, but what was the, Brandon brought it up about another bridge to cross the river? How would we do that from public property and not on private property? Would that go?
That was kind of identified for grant purposes and we don't know what's gonna happen with that, uh, at Bubba Camp. You know, if it gets developed and that turns into a natural area, is there, uh, you know, but. Desire for whoever someday will own that to have access to that park to get them into the community quicker. Versus walking all the way down Churchill because well, there's a, there's a quicker access for you and then. Uh, but it might not be, you know, so it was illustrated for, you know, grant purposes, basically, is that if you don't have it on. An exhibit, you don't identify it, they're not gonna give you any money for it. So if the time and the opportunity came, you wanna make sure it's been identified. So. There's some things in here that are grant related.
Necessary for.
Maybe, but never, ever come to fruition, but you wanna make sure you, you kind of load it up. So if the opportunity does come. That it's, it's identified in a, in a master plan especially.
Do you think you'd be able to get that in a precision with?
Kim, respect is probably gonna be a lot like Frank's or I'm not against it, but I'm neither than agree to it right now in case it prevents somebody from.
That's would be my assumption.
He wants your permission today.
Uh, can you continue?
Sure, um, are we good with village park?
Well, what do we wanna see down or do we wanna see like a little ban shell some down, down or someday we wanna see?
I think.
I think we focus on the walking path. We have to start on, get some paths so we know that we, we, we have to incorporate into the plan that we are gonna be able to tie into the south side of the bridge. And then also incorporate those steps are gonna be changing and we need to loop it from this backside here up to the top. So you can at least get to where the parking lot is. So we can have a path that loops all the way around.
I think all you need is walking paths to be able to drive by that, drive across that bridge and see that all open. I think that's all you need to do.
Opening that up. I agree. And if we took out that second ball field and shaved that hillside down and. That's where, yeah, that's where the path would come around up to the park so you could make a full loop there. And if, I would think the cost would be fairly minimal. For the grading and the, the path and it would open the whole place up and make it, and then if we cut out all the underbrush to, so even when people are. Driving across the bridge or by the bridges, you see everything that way. You know, it's almost like when the victory one came in all of a sudden, it's like, wow, you can see everything now.
Right. And that's, then you maybe wouldn't have that, you know, people down there. Cause you can just.
Safe, safe.
Right, you know, right.
But that, I, I think the walking path and that beach, they're the first two low-hanging fruits for village park that we could accomplish. And that leaves us open for growth. Whatever, if we wanna develop it, wanna put a splash pad, wanna move the ball fields, um, I think it's a really, I think it's a great base.
I would say power and lighting are two things that desperately be needed along with the walking path.
Sure.
The, I feel like, but that lowest level right by the river is so underutilized for, I mean.
Because it's.
You could have, and, and there's no power. You could have farmer's markets down there. You could have all kinds of.
Half the people don't know, that live in town don't know what's down there.
I lived there for a year and a half before I even knew it existed. And I went down there and I was like, oh.
Can you give me?
A huge amount of the community.
It's our golden goose and it's like, we, we need this to look right. It. It fosters every other part of our community. It's a calling card for people that wanna move here. That all just looks nice. And we could do that pretty easily with, you know, getting all the brush and all the little trees and all the garbage out there.
Like grading would probably still be a couple hundred thousand or something.
Quick question for.
It'd be a big deal.
Chuck, how much, uh, Chuck, how much, uh?
How, uh, intensive would it be to get power along that walking trail? Is it substantially, is there a substantial cost to that? If we were to, cause I know we're talking about, you know, some significant cost of grading and rubbing and structure, right? But getting, just getting a, a established walking trail down there with lighting and coming around and looping up and underneath the, the, the bridge and connecting back up with the already.
So if you can adult me, I think it would be helpful to kind of go through.
Yeah.
The, what's there now, what the master plan was and some of the phasings, cause that touches upon a lot of this stuff and the first phase was primarily the trails. So, um, what you see here now is this is the existing, right? You got the softball, little field, everybody's talking about. I got your ball field. Uh, you have the lower terrace, you have the upper terrace, you have the restroom.
Moving your cursor too fast.
Oh, that is a good. But, so you've gotta see the, you know, the head bridge where the, um. You know, still we have, there's just things like that. So, I mean, I just wanted to set the table here, right?
So that second ball field where to get sloped down to the river and then cleaned up. Make that pass and.
So here's the.
An open cradle.
So here was the kind of the ultimate.
Blow it up a little bit.
Yep. And this is kind of a. Again, this is, this is the whole kit, right? And maybe it'd be, if I go through the phases, the first phase. We were suggesting with the, the this part, cause I think of the opinion, I'm, I'm going back to twenty eighteen now, but. You know, my.
Putting the.
My, you know, you clean up that parking lot and make that a little more attractive, that would invite people to actually go there and use. to actually go there and use it, right, cause it would be a little more sensible, so again, if you got the money, you know, that, that's something you can consider. Uh, along with, cause it, you know, the rest of the, the rest of this phase was, you know, this trail system connecting into the bridge, looping around and, you know, to your point, moving that, maybe that, that overlook or that fishing gear to a different location that makes more sense.
And we have to fix that pond anyways, that pond we have down there right now is, is in rough shape.
Yeah, but, so again, this is the, this again certainly changed, right, this is just the concept, but that was, that was one of the thoughts of fixing up the parking lot, cleaning that up and getting that trail in down there. While still maintaining the ball fields, right, while you figure that out.
So river, the river road that you have right there, you blow that back up. Come across the bridge, down a little bit. Right there, okay, may come across on Main Street, right there, a river road, that turns back up a- as it normally does, that doesn't change?
Oh, it ends right there, goes into that person's house and that's the end of the road.
Okay, so that's just a, that's just access to those existing buildings then?
Correct.
So River Road would e- essentially terminate?
Yep.
Well, it looks like there's still a good spot to access there for the snowmobiles to get off, would we be able to build? Get something there so the kids still get up and out of there, so when.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, that, that would be something that.
I wouldn't, I don't think we'd wanna get rid of a throughway to the river road.
How would vehicles get down into the park?
Yeah, if Main Street gets blocked off or whatever, then there's no other way across the bridge.
If we're in the wrong concept, but here in the face, so I think the trail.
Yeah, you had three bits into concepts, I don't, but I think you got rid of all River Road and all of it.
Yeah, I did.
If we could grind that down enough and put a nice pavilion down there that people could use for, you know, parties or, you know, picnics or whatever, I think that would be.
Ultimately, I'd like to see, it's isn't, isn't a portion of River Road, wouldn't it be nice to look at the west side of River Road as a potential development opportunity for businesses to develop? And have that as a, uh, you know, a cro- pardon.
Little strip mall there?
Well, not necessarily a strip mall, but I mean, like actual restaurant, yeah, it's an extension of downtown right along there, just on the backside of those houses. And it would wrap up on that portion right before the corner and you could actually have businesses and or restaurants. A- and, and across from it would be our river walk going down into the, into the, uh, to the apple.
Are, are you talking here?
Yeah.
Other side of the street.
Yeah, right there, right there, we're down, go up where that arrow is, go up where that arrow is, now just on the other side of there. Right there, there you go, where he's at, right there.
There's not a whole lot of real estate there, that'd be a pretty small.
Doesn't even be a lot of real estate for having people having parks and, and, you know, restaurants and or, you know, places for, uh, individuals to grab a burger and take a walk down on the, on the river.
Like Hudson has.
Exactly.
Well, the trails are gonna connect to the food truck place too.
Yeah, if you get them on both then.
Those food trucks, you know, here, you know.
And that kinda goes along with what David Brock has been wanting for years and years and years and years. About over twenty-five years.
All those restaurants, yeah, I mean, I, I, I always thought right along with. The restaurants, there's a couple of restaurants there tiered down.
Why don't you, why don't you get up there again and tell everybody what you've been saying for twenty-five years and see if we can.
Well, well, I, I think, you go back to where the ball fields are, Chuck.
Oh, sure.
A picture where the, where the ball fields are. Maybe just existing, maybe. I, 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 I thought you'd take this ball field and move it this way, take this ball field and move it this way and then right along here you have two or three or four spots where some restaurants or coffee shops or something will be tiered down overlooking the the, the river walk. You know, and then you just lease like four or five spots, it's just perfect terrain, the way it goes down. Where the restaurants would be up, this would be parking, so this would be pushed over, the parking would be right here for these restaurants right here. I, I, it seems to make sense to me, but that's just.
And so Dave, what I was suggesting, something, something similar to that, but we already have the infrastructure here. And so we all, you know, right along this edge in this area, you could actually put that and then that would be the start of potential development. Moving into that direction is what I'm saying.
What I liked about over here is if you're sitting in this restaurant and actually you're overlooking the river walk, where I don't think you're gonna see it.
But if you start with the roads and take the road down and circle the road back, you could get that, is what I'm saying. And you still will have the ability of a pavilion slash green space up in this neck of woods. If we get rid of these ball fields and you have the parking space and stuff up on the top end or additional, uh, parking and you still keep all your walking trails in the middle of that.
I was over here the other day, this is a big area, I mean.
Sure is.
I mean, it's bigger than you think, that's why I thought maybe you could lose that and just lose this whole.
Well, we got a nice corner lot over here that's for sale for some nice property for overlooking the restaurant. This corner lot is the prime, let me tell you, and it's for sale, just saying. And we'll continue on the other side of Main Street too.
Do you know, do we know how this land was acquired and if there's any restrictions on it?
It's old school.
But all this village park.
That was old school.
So there's no, I mean, so you.
Any covenants?
You could sell it tomorrow if you wanted to.
Yeah, the ball field needs to be.
Not that you want to.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the parking area was the school and then where the baseball fields are was always the village.
It was the school.
Again, I don't think, but I'm not, I'm not really in favor of selling it, I like the idea of.
No, I just, I just wanted, if there was some restrictions that said thou shall can't put anything like that on there, cause sometimes you, you buy.
I don't think there's a constitution, no, there's no restriction on it.
Bob, is there any way for to continue the trail downstream and then continue downstream, is there, would there be any kind of easements to be able to put a trail below like Riverwalk Apartments? And then if so, is there any kind of a public place to be able to, I mean, I, maybe we'll go to Float Ride or whatever after that. But if you could go past that, all those homes and, um, or all that property and get out at Public Works and have a big trail through there? Is there a?
I'm not sure, I'd, I'd have to look at the.
I think it's pretty steep.
Down my worth of terrace was, right?
Yeah.
It, it is.
Yeah, okay, well then.
It's rimming, pretty much, there's a kid all the way along here.
I was gonna say, I played there, there is a, there, you could, you could have a trail from the village park to Float Ride Park. Yeah. It, it, it's possible.
There already is a trail there.
Yeah.
It would probably end at, boom, right, and that's not jabbing anyone, but they do a lot of weddings and they wouldn't wanna go.
But we could still expand it more.
I was gonna say, ultimately it'll get it down and if he turn around, come back, then he turn around, come back.
There is a trail up into the Riverwalk, so Riverwalk Apartments, the steps, so maybe we could get it at least to go to that far.
Yeah, I think we should have the, the conversation with them because it would only increase their property value, make their more stuff for the apartment people to get down in there, I think it would only make sense for them to team up with us on there, much like Steve is on on the property that's adjacent to his, what, what is the easement right away from the edge of the river? That the village would be able to use?
No, just like, uh.
Are there DNR restrictions? Could you hit the river?
Thirty-five.
Seventy-five feet in the high water, high water mark for, for permanent structures.
But not for trails.
Not for trails, right.
Yeah, there is no.
Permanent structure.
But yeah, there's no steps, there's no easement, the landowner repairing rights are to the water, there is no easement, right? Well, there's something that I saw in the paper the other day, Osseo like got a grant to repair their, their stairs, would this be something that we would be able for that grant, we'd be able to apply for that same grant, now I know we got the tap grant for the other trails. But Osseo got a grant for something almost identical for fixing up, I think it was the St. Croix, uh.
There's a lot of grants, it's just.
Is it big enough to be worth your trouble? Guess that would be the, why strings attached to grants?
We shaped that down, clean that up, clean up that whole hillside, get a trail and then if we get some kind of agreement where they come up on the side of Riverwalk and have a trail that comes back to Spring Street.
Um, do you have a, do you have enough to go back and change phase one with? Or should we have more meetings for input on Village Park before we?
I agree with that.
Do you have a public, a public forum?
I think we need to begin with the M and nine when, before we start anything other than cleanup. I think cleanup could start immediately, but as far as where we're ultimately trying to get to, I think needs to have the whole community's input and, and get the buy-in from everybody. Because from my view, where this lands and if we do it right, we can generate enough interest and we can get started on things, but ultimately to pay for what everybody lands on is gonna come to a referendum.
And if we do it right.
We're gonna spend the next ten years as the village board piecemealing it out until we get there.
And maybe this is a ten or fifteen year plan, but we just have to have a master plan to get the thing.
I think we need to say, here's where we're going.
And, and, and if we, and we, you know, look at it from a pragmatic standpoint where there's potential for a private portion of development aspect too, there is other individuals that might be willing to endeavor in development on that which would offset and possibly extend our abilities to build those pavilions and stuff. If we were to, you know, sell that land and start developing into that area, then oh, then we can, you know, further our advancement.
Also, we are, we've still for budgeting purposes, we've already agreed to goats again next year to help clear that to clear some out and then we're gonna mechanically separate that, do we wanna, so we tabled.
I think it was twelve thousand bucks, I think is what we were looking at.
Yeah, we tabled the mechanical separation, I believe, so do we want to, as part of this discussion, move forward with that?
I think we get it cleared out because we don't even quite know what we're dealing with.
And I think it's, we need something more than goats.
Yeah, yeah, no, goats aren't gonna do all. Was it with a mechanic?
With the mechanic, it was seven thousand with a mechanic, four thousand.
I would go to.
Get him through the mechanical order.
We tabled everything until this week, but.
I mean, there's a lot of beautiful.
I have a, just a crazy question, but what, would it, would it help to have just a little bit more land, cause I was just thinking to myself, at the Riverwalk Apartments there's the, there's apartments, then there's a second level, there's a third level, I'm guessing they don't even need or want the third level. What if a person could purchase that third level? Reasonable.
What if the village?
The village could purchase it, I mean, now you kind of, you added a term, I could look in, I could just look into it. Contact those people and say, you know, probably a land building, more of a land building.
It's a floodway down there in the mission right now.
It's the same level as the village park, the third level right now, and it's a pretty big area, pretty big. It would, it might be a nice add-on to the village park.
It would be great, especially if we get trail connected, because, I mean, we could do it, I mean, events for pea soup and haunted hayride and all of those things, we're, we're adding a lot of really unique.
If you kept going to the end of the village park, where it's kinda got that little fence, if you just kept going straight is what you're talking about.
There's a couple hats to that right there.
Nothing there, there's nothing there. That's exactly, yeah, there's, there's the end of the village park, I'm talking about this area right here.
Nope.
I don't, and this is, this goes, and this is third, this is second level, first level, second level, third level. I'm talking about this area right here, it might be entrance to the Zellnet, very reasonable. I don't know, can't ask.
Isn't it, isn't that, Dave, isn't that much more calmer river, you know, you know there too?
It's, it's, it's the same, it's the same here.
No, no, it's very shallow and.
But it's the same, it's the same.
Yeah, yeah, this is where it gets steep down there.
That's the old though.
Underflow, yeah. I was.
Yeah.
Cause I looked at that.
Does the DNR allow you for any kind of fencing, something in the river? So. I think a, a concern of kids washing down the river, trying to find a swim area that would.
Scroll out a little bit. And now if you go kitty corner across the river, click on the St. Anne's.
It's a floatable pool.
Uh, not the one, the one below it. Yeah, that's it, so there, if we could get permission from St. Anne's and, and there, well, actually.
That's yours, you got a little bit of land there.
They wanted that.
But if we could put, if we could put that bridge there across and get a trail up to our, our existing trails up on Churchill. That would be fantastic.
When I was a kid, I don't know if it's still there, but from the St. Anne's side, there was a trail all the way along there where you could walk, all the way.
Imagine if we had a nice bridge, walk bridge, another snowmobile bridge?
You could cut into the hill and put a path right down next to the water, all the way from that foot, from the footbridge all the way up to.
All the way to Apple River campground, yeah?
Yeah. It was one there when I was a kid, I don't know, it was just a walking path through the woods.
How great would that be to be able to loop all the way through and get, connect to our existing trails on Churchill?
So phase one, we're gonna keep, we'll focus on cleaning out Village Park and.
I think this con- this conversation is good because it, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of, uh, for, I agree, we need to get full, you know, uh, commit, community input on this and, and move forward, the cleaning out and that kind of stuff, we could start that process and, and what do you think the cost on that? I mean, we, I know we were looking at about twelve grand and that was just a kind of a, if we were to get really in depth with it, are we looking at, you know, twenty-five grand at least?
Um, I just think with the grubby, my, my hope was that would just gain some community momentum, that people would see that cleared out and that it would gain some support.
Sure.
That we could do that.
So what, what, cost wise, when I'm, I, you know, I mean for, is that something that we have, that we have, uh, you know?
I think a lot of it will be done with the mechanical and, um.
So you think we'll be, be able to be in, in that realm or twelve grandish?
It's gonna be a little bit more.
How much was it when, like six years ago when that company came in and took out all the stuff around by the bridge?
That's six grand.
That's it?
So that's a, that's the piece that we really need to go and look at long-term, that's what that, because on the Dairy Queen corner, the north east corner, it's just like that, and I always envisioned putting some limestone, you know, terrace down.
Northwest part.
Northwest corner, no, I mean northeast, northeast corner. They're crossing, crossing the bridge, where the old steps are.
She's talking from the Dairy Queen.
Where the old stair.
Yeah, fixed.
Northeast, that's the there.
Yeah, so.
I don't, I don't.
The Dairy Queen side, that's, that's right now, we had all that removed and sprayed and, I mean, that's, that's it, because there's no way to get anything in there, but that's all I always envisioned, that was just a step, you know, a six foot where you get a lot more in there, cut that, and it was just a terrace down. Uh, you, you're able to maintain it and then people could enjoy a lunch on that side of the river too. But then it, we had a means of maintaining it, cause right now it's just gonna get grown back up. That's looks good for a while, but.
Looks good for a while, but that's right back to.
So we were to be able to look at for the purposes of moving this meeting forward here, so setting aside twenty grand and next year's budget for, for. You know, starting that process while we continue to discern what we're gonna do with Village Park as far as where the, where the pathways are gonna go. And well, how that's all gonna kind of lay out. Some people have some conversations with additional landowners. You know, that would be the process you think maybe it would start, would that be a, a, a good start in taking care of that end of it?
I think so. We could also get Dave Patton over here at some point, he could give, he's a landscape architect in St. Paul that. Yeah, he could, he could maybe make some suggestions for some of those corners or some of the things that we've talked about now that are the low hanging fruit, right? The clearing out, the terracing, you know, la di da di da.
We should get a quote to clear out all the underbrush and anything smaller than like the four inches or something in. On that whole hillside, get a quote for that and see where we're at.
And then we're talking about doing that, right?
We have to make sure we include in that quote, the two acres south of the bridge as well. Of the jointed property, cause that would be nice. That's beautiful limestone in there, it'd be crazy.
I'd also like to entertain the individual saying that they're on the other side of the river, if there's, if there's a, if there's an actual walking path over there. That, that's on that side of the river.
Doing a share of your speed? It's pretty rough to, I've tried to get through there, but yeah, if you cleaned it out, maybe you could, but it's pretty steep over there. A lot of, it's mostly just a lot of dump at this point, pretty much everyone's gonna fill their garbage down in there, but you clean it out.
And then zoom in, if you could do it up there.
You talking about the south side and Steve's land?
No, on the farther up north, by the stairs, north of the stairs, it's pretty rough through there.
So if we could get a bridge across from village land to village land and then be able to get permission or an easement through, uh, Saint Anne's property and get up to that. Yeah, but you could do some switchbacks and.
When you have, your new switchback part of Dairy Queen isn't that far from there, so they can get up to your, your watching.
Saint, Saint Anne's only owns this little landlocked chunk though, there's private entities all around it.
You have to try and get to the switchback, we're gonna have, what's that land that's one to the south on the river?
Oh, so they're saying it's here, yes.
And then what's?
That's yours.
And then what's that there?
So there's all, so they're saying it's okay, so, but again, if you're looking at a bridge, a half billion bucks.
Oh, we're talking about like the snowmobile club, put one in there for us.
They bought their bridge in nineteen seventy one, they're done. I think if we were gonna put in another bridge, I think if we're really considering putting another bridge, I think we. Get a bridge anywhere, I'd like to get one from Meadows, no, not for vehicle, but from the Meadows over to the.
Yeah, I agree. Uh, so we're talking about, um, getting clearing all on the west bank. All along there, clearing that all the way out, it's going back south. All the way to the bridge and under the bridge. And, and on, and. And on the east side. Right? That's what we're talking about clearing. You think twenty grand is enough to do that?
Is there any concern about destabilizing those slopes and all?
Yeah, that'd be a conversation.
Yeah, you just hate to remove everything that's holding the, the soap in place and then all of a sudden you're having to put back stuff.
That'll save on the excavation cost.
Goats can't eat stumps.
They want that root.
I'm seeing that, seeing we got about twenty thousand, we're looking at to put into Village Park for, uh, clearing and, and starting a prep. Ongoing discussion with the, uh, ongoing discussion as far as what the layout and look is going to be on that. That we can talk about when we get back into committee as far as when we'll start that process or how that's gonna go. Um, Larry Forrest?
Thirty grand for pickleball court.
Did I see it? Well, I think we, we had quotes on that, does that change much?
No, that was the last quote I got, twenty eight, with some change. With some additional fencing.
And vets?
Vets. A basketball court needs to be resurfaced, that's probably a forty thousand dollar, that might be a little high.
We can get pickleball courts for thirty, I think will be.
Is there a reason, is there a reason why we wouldn't put the pickleball court in the basketball?
Is there a reason why we wouldn't put the pickleball court for the basketball courters? No, and well, no, over here we were gonna put the pickleball court, but why, is there a reason why we wouldn't put the pickleball courts over at Vets and have all the pickleball courts in? One area?
Two different areas.
Areas, and then when we talk about putting lights in Larry Forrest or the baseball too.
Parking is another issue too. You know, you got a lot of people that park up on that one side and at least you'll have an opportunity for, for, uh, this side of town to have. Uh, the same amenities of that side of town.
Do we have lights out there? We don't have lights out there for, so, but the lights won't work on the. We, the lights that are currently at Vets Park, would those work over on the basketball court? Would you be able to see?
Yeah, you, you, you understand that. So, but, but the basketball court is definitely something to. And then what else we have here? So, how are the bathrooms, uh, in pretty good shape yet still? I mean.
I mean, bathrooms, those fixtures are original with that building, I think that building was. Eighteen eighty, anybody remember? That Larry Forrest? I remember when I was a kid. That in forty three here?
Yeah, yeah.
Do they have running water?
I know, I know Donnie's been, you know, pushing it a lot and doing a good job, but maybe, uh, a good amenity for the community would be a dog park. If we could get access by that land below Riverwalk, that might be a good spot for, for a dog park.
We figured the dog park into tid five. Dog parks come. At that path will, if we get all the, eventually it sounds like it's gonna connect, eventually.
That's right, that's what I heard, my, my ears peep.
The warming room, uh, I've heard from a lot of people, I have family reunions, birthday parties or whatever. It'd be nice to have some kitchen facilities up there.
So what are you looking at for rent in there, potentially for wood, for facilities? Are you looking for just like countertops, good tables and stuff like that?
Fridge, um, freezer. So, you know, a stolen oven.
Counters too, right? Services put on, power is good there, right? I might be able to, I might be able to donate you some stainless steel cables and stuff for that. I, I have some, uh.
We still have veterans.
Do we wanna, so we would like, we wanna move forward with the pickleball courts, right? And Larry Forrest is, is that, are we good with that, putting that on the budget? I'd like to see it, that on the budget, the pickleball court.
But we haven't.
We haven't approved it yet, we have to work it into the budget.
That was part of, I would like to see the pickleball courts at Larry Forrest or either Larry Forrest or Veterans, wherever we decide to work in.
I'm fine with, I'm fine with it. I, I, you know, I, I think Larry Forrest is a good place for it too. I, I'm listening for the rest of the board. Are they kind of in agreement on that or?
A pickleball court? Larry Forrest?
No, eventually we'll have to get a price on the, on the trails at Larry Forrest, right? We'll have to get that costed out. Because that, they are starting to deteriorate, especially coming up to the ball fields, if we can get the, uh, you know, cost on that. So for this next year's purpose of budget, we're looking at twenty thousand for Village Park, thirty thousand for, uh, Larry Forrest, uh, pickleball courts. Uh, are we gonna do anything at Vets this year? Are we gonna take a pass on it? Maybe look at just getting the pavilions, you know, fixed up and. And, and in a, in better shape and then maybe we can look at the bathrooms for next year, cause I think they'll survive another year.
Hey, Chuck, Chuck brought up a good point while we're on this, he said, you know, there's a residence right behind it, right behind Larry Forrest and they've, um. He has had known instances where he closed down pickleball courts.
Neighbor complaints, yeah, cause you get that, you know, that it's noisy when the ball hits the racket, the paddle and the, the ball hits the, like, court. And if you put it multiple, it's, it's a lot of.
They're only open till nine or ten o'clock.
Well, until we get the lights, right?
Well, but the lights go shut off and then it's good luck and.
And I'm just, just, just eyes wide open because, you know, there's, people want their windows open in the summer and some of those things.
Well, we want, we want it, we're interested in it, Veterans will Larry.
We'll give them an opportunity to speak their mind if they, if they, if you want to at the next, uh, uh, public works committee. They know they're coming, you know, that's a good time for people to, you know, speak on it. I'm not, I'm not saying that we're not gonna listen to them. I'm just saying to give them an opportunity.
Does anybody know, I, I, I don't know if I've heard this firsthand or secondhand, but Sunrise Bar Clutters. Is that in a, did they put that in some kind of conservancy or something like that?
No, I asked Jim Clutcher about that, to verify that, cause that's what I've always heard him say, no. Development, I just wanna keep it, he said, maybe my kids will have a different idea, but, but this generation.
But maybe something from Steve's land, then something across the river and a trail up through, sorry.
Interested in potential ball fields over there.
I think we have potentials other places in that as well.
And ball fields are done, uh, school.
Where the ball fields go.
I agree.
They've got acres upon acres.
What is that?
Well, they tried that at, follow the referendum. The only thing I'd like to see over at Vets, if I can keep rolling this is, uh, is I'd like to see some swings. Is there a chance we can get some swings in there for some, uh, you know, age appropriate children in there? I know that there.
I'll talk with you about that. There was.
Is there a cost associated with that? At least we could get that, that a finance for.
Yeah, tons swings, but there's, there was something, something with the, the non restrictive swings, just the, the, you know, the black, plastic thing. There was a situation with that and I don't remember, I'll, I'll have to ask Jim. If it was our insurance company or if it was, I don't remember.
There's been several individuals that have asked for it, so we just need to see. Yeah, and, why don't we have any swings?
Does the church have anything, a playground or?
Yeah, we have Gogo pit, that's it.
Gogo pit?
At, at Christ Luther?
Well, I don't know what a Gogo pit is.
And we got them into school, so you get in there and you play Gogo.
For the village parkers and the budget up to twenty grand to be able to clear it out.
That's what, that's what I got in my notes. Twenty grand for, uh, Village Park clearing, thirty thousand for, uh, for Larry Forrest or an expansion of pickleball courts. Maybe five thousand for Vets and, uh, and to get swings and, and fix the pavilions. I'm just kind of ballparking it here. No, we don't have to say fix the pavilions, we got two pavilions that are severely distressed and need some, need some tender loving care. I mean, we got posts that need to be replaced on them, we have, uh, if you go into them and look up in them, you're like, why are these things even still standing? They need some, they need some structural integrity put to them and, and we, I think we got a couple of, uh, the, uh, uh. Grills that are actually, I fixed them a couple of, a couple of years ago already, with stainless steel in the bottom, cause they were rusted all out. So, you know, that kind of stuff, we just need to look at, and that's what I was saying, we put like five thousand on that, uh, you know, is that, is that?
I'd like to see one of those up in the grand or two, it'd be nice to have one over there.
So Bob, you'll, uh, you'll check with the DNR about clearing the hillside out and that two acre. And include that two acres.
I'm meeting with them tomorrow at two fifteen.
And then get a quote for those two acres and everything down the river. What do you, what would we say, anything under four inches or five inches or six inches?
At least six. I think that caliper is important, but if they're box over or cottonwood trees that are.
Get part of this, be put in. As part of the clearing, can we put in any new stuff or?
In the spring, we'll have whole townwide community.
Do we want, do we want Bob to try to get a quote to see what it would cost to take, uh, that second ball field and slope it down?
Well, I think that's all part of phase, I think that's all part of a encompassing quote of phase one that we really, that we really need to have to tie all those. Tie all that in, but just to get a quote, just to see what that would cost to grade that down.
Getting a quote is, there's nothing wrong with getting a quote, at the end of the day though, we need to figure out, you know, what, what this community wants, you know? And I don't, I don't wanna, uh, run it, you know, chase quotes when they say, no, we don't wanna do it that way or, you know, we're gonna do something else. So I, I think it makes sense for us to at least clear the land and figure out what we have, assess what we have and have a meeting of the community to figure out what they wanna, what they really want and how we're gonna proceed.
I think Donnie speaks power, good sense right there. Once you open things up, you'll think, oh my gosh, that could be. Clearly you see it all, different things come to your mind.
Caleb, do you have the plans? Yeah, that you came up.
Through the champions?
I, I was just gonna say, going back to, I, uh, uh, our numbers of the purpose, we're kind of getting ready for, you know, budget purposes. Is, uh, there, the mulch, uh, I, I, all of the, the, I, are we, I know we got some of it done. Do we have all of it? Do we need to put money into the budget for next year to replace the mulch at, at the, uh, the rest of the parks? Cause I think we were looking at, uh, God, I wanna say ten, was it ten grand? We'll go back to Jim.
No, we, we spent nineteen hundred.
I think it's ten grand, but let me.
I saw the park up by me, got some fresh stuff in there up there, yeah.
Would you consider doing some native landscapes and so that you didn't have to do as much mulching? They take the place of mulch?
Such as?
Native, um, plants?
Well, is this mulch mostly just for play?
Not for weed control?
The mulch is, uh. In the, in the email that Jim sent back in March, uh, he was looking at eighty six hundred dollars to replace the, uh, uh, the cost for replacing the borders at the playgrounds. Uh, they are starting to deteriorate, uh, and that includes even Vets, the Meadows, Larry Forrest and, uh, Montague Parks. And he also had a quote in here for, uh. Semi load of a hundred cubic yard of the mulch for, to get rid of the pea gravels, cause they're throwing the pea gravel onto the, uh, pickleball courts. So, uh, uh, right now, I roughly estimate we're able to replace the pea gravel playgrounds with mulch, we require at least five full loads, so we're looking at ten grand. So we got ten grand there, eighteen thou, uh, eight, eighty six hundred for, just for replacing general maintenance. So we're looking at like eighteen, eighteen thousand dollars for general maintenance of the playgrounds and that doesn't include any new equipment or anything like that. I think that's a tall order for everything.
What do we do with that old pea gravel, what is that called? Is that somewhere else?
I mean, fifty each. We're looking at seventy five thousand dollars. Be looking at seventy-five thousand dollars. Just in those. To get the pickleball courts, to get the clearing done, to get the, the uh borders done and general maintenance on their playgrounds. So that they're safe and, and uh our kids don't get injured and uh. And uh. Yeah, pea gravel. Picks up uh, uh veterans pavilions. Seventy-five thousand.
I'm gonna look, I'll look into, don't cause anything, but below the, the Riverwalk just to see. But I'm gonna, I'll say with, with your permission, I'm gonna say I'm representing the village, cause I've done that before. And it would be representative village of that, just to see if they're, be willing to.
Worth a, worth a conversation, Dave, for sure. It's worth a conversation.
Long as you don't bill us.
What's that?
All in all, I'll be able to. Are we comfortable with these numbers? Uh, that are presented or is that something?
I think we could even go higher on the clearing.
Oh great, spend four million tonight.
I would even go higher on the clearing.
He'll just run a check. Nobody's holding you back.
Up to thirty?
He's just kidding. Two hundred dollars an hour, three hundred dollars an hour.
It's a lot of work.
Budget up too, we got more, he's gonna be.
His equipment can get through all of that, up that hillside, that'd have to be a different.
That's where, that's where he's talking about.
With man lines and everything else.
But what that, is that, is that pond on the schedule to be fixed next year? That's in some water, okay, okay.
Yeah, we gotta make sure that hillside gets scorched earth almost.
I, I, I say up to thirty thousand for the hillside.
Let's improve the yield.
Yeah, clear everything out, make care of it.
It'll be a bunch of tree removal too.
Right, well. Everybody's eye to it, they'll utilize it more.
I, that'd be great. Uh, right now, we just still have one or two years for next year. They make us do this budget with, with blinders on. And we can, we can put things in.
We can always go lower if we need to, but.
That's what I'm saying, comfortably, we waited the waters with the plan of seventy-five thousand and we can figure out where we go from there. Once we have our, our, you know, our numbers, we can kinda back off on it or, or see if we can achieve it. Ultimately, we'd love to achieve it, but. And what would the cost be of us increasing the levy a little bit in regards to, you know, on the, on the GO in order to make this happen? That's, that's what I would like to know, because if it's a, you know, a five dollar cost to the taxpayers to, to clear out and start this process. Maybe everybody might be willing to spend that money. I, I don't know.
I'll just speak to that.
I'm pretty. Pretty lovely because it's low.
Yeah, and that was with thirty Village Park, thirty for the.
No, I went twenty, thirty, five and uh, and eighteen. I'd like to get that maintenance done on those other parts.
He's at seventy-five all around, you checked on another time, Mike.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we just spent like twenty, twenty-two thousand dollars on radio, so. Fix it up to park.
Right.
So you want, you know, I mean, I, if you wanna look at it at, at thirty, but I think our budget would be between twenty and thirty at, at. At the, at uh Village Park at this point in time, just to finish up what we got, put it all down.
I think it'll make a huge difference.
I, I think it would be worthy of us having a conversation with some of them guys and seeing what that number's gonna really come out at.
Sure.
Before, before we get into.
And we could probably start even a golf fund near, give butter. Well, there's also um sponsorships at the disc golf course are for sale. And that goes to the general fund, we could be used for this, so.
Two of the sponsors are in this room.
I know, I appreciate it. They're made a potential third, you never know.
That's just for, as for fixing up the grills that we got and uh fixing the pavilions, we'll address the uh infrastructure needs of the other. Areas and I might be able to help out with some of that stuff for, and if we gotta buy a five hundred dollar fridge or something like that, I think we can get it done with a five grand.
Sure. Got a request.
Sure.
So I guess I'm also confused, I only predicted, we did up to thirty at Village Park. And then thirty for the pickleball courts at Larry Forrest. And so it's only at five for that part.
We said twenty-five for digital.
Well, yeah, the pea gravel and.
I factored, I factored in a little decrease because this was March and I'm sure that inflation was probably looking a little higher on the, on the, the mulch and everything, so. I went up to twenty grand instead of that with the five, so I got, I got twenty grand on the, the, the parts, five thousand at vets. Twenty to thirty thousand at Village and thirty thousand at Larry Forrest with pickleball courts.
Thirty, thirty, twenty?
General maintenance?
Well, yeah, that's why I figured it's twenty. And five thousand for uh vets.
You guys have anything to add on? Snowmobile trails. Bridge.
It'd be nice if we could add a couple more in.
I would recognize that it sounded like um, what you're recommending for the budget for next year is. Like double what this year's budget was or more. Triple, um, and so I. I'm appreciative that you are mindful of taxpayer dollars, but it's a, a great investment in the.
Which is long overdue. It's gonna draw people down there.
And I'm hoping it's just the very beginning, small step.
Right.
You hope by making these improvements, it helps your property values. I mean, that's, you look at every piece of uh. Good places to live, the rankings. Parks and recreation are always at the top.
And it's gonna help us sell our property too. You know, we've got a corner lot here and if we got a river walk that leads up to it, that you can see over, it's gonna. Our property value is gonna go up.
Bob, I think your comment about having, getting the, the, this first phase done will uh certainly increase the community support. I think you're right about that.
Right. So I'll make, I'll make a motion to recommend a finance uh, the allocation of uh. Seventy-five to eighty-five thousand dollars for uh Village Park improvements.
Any further discussion? We wanna break it down into, or just overall Village Park?
Based on our conversations here today, I think finance and uh, I don't think we have to worry about, you know, going sideways with our numbers. Everybody's kind of in agreement on it, so.
Any further, further discussion?
And that includes the south side of the village, right?
Since you guys are just talking about this lot right here and you're gonna be clearing out stuff, would you wanna clear that place out too, to help sell your lot?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, and we could actually go down below the police department here too.
I'm just saying, if you got the equipment here, it's cheaper to have them do it now than do it, come back later.
We don't own the riverbank.
Well, if they gave us permission. I'm saying, if they gave us permission and we would be willing to do that at that point in time, would definitely open up the whole river. Before we. Before we cross over that bridge, we find out what the cost is gonna be and, and, but I mean, you know, what, what it would cost us for. For going in and clearing it out, if they give us permission to do it. We'd, I'd be willing to, you know. I like to open up the river. I think just that, just that little bit that we, that, that Mikey, when you did, when you put them stairs, just that little bit. Got attention. In that area, people walking down, wow, what's there? Can you imagine that whole thing opened up? It would be, I think it would be fabulous, so.
So if you click on that, that whole hillside. Beacons is Village of Somerset. Pull up your screen on beacon.
Sorry, are you talking about right behind where?
Below here, right here, right here, this is all village. Yeah, I'm, I'm talking there too.
But the vacant lot doesn't go to the river.
Right, but down here does and then on the other side, that two acres. Yeah, so adding that in would be.
I'm just trying to.
Get a fit within our budget.
You see if we got enough fit into the budget.
Alright, I think we got a first and, first and a second.
Any further discussion? There are none, all in favor?
Ready for a motion to adjourn?